Having a basketball field is not decent.
Do you feel like though with the stipulations we've added thus far that it would help to reduce substantial injury or prevent?
I think if there were limitations, I think it would reduce the substantial injury. You've got some of our property lots for sale and these people coming in to buy these lots to build happy things like that. They have no idea that if they're buying a property, it's going to be within earshot of a ballgame. Some of them may get that fine, some of them may not. Years past when I had a job with customers, they, they, for full disclosure, today we had one full disclosure from me to be now. As realtors, who do they say, oh, by the way, there is a baseball field over there. And on Saturday evening here, people play the baseball. Now probably all the realtors today don't know that. Today still have to, okay.
We have more disclosure now than we ever have.
That's good. But it's hard to define what substantial injury would be. It may not be to you at all.
Right, exactly.
To me, it could be, or this definitely could hurt, so, yeah.
Jack, is there any guidance on injuries to find those?
Well, yeah, to the value of the property.
No, that's subjective.
Well, no, I mean, if a property see value, it see value, you can't, you can't say, yeah, my property is worth a million dollars and if this is worth a million dollars, then I'm PO'd or I'm upset. The value is the value, so the question is, how much value is being dropped? As real estate agents, that's the question.
But someone is willing to pay for it?
Definitely.
Right, the value of the property is what this is asking for. So if you bring something into a neighborhood and everybody wants to move because it's going to destroy everything, and they all pack away and the houses go from a hundred thousand dollars to fifty thousand, that will be a hundred percent guaranteed, you get a substantial injury case for it.
And this is their four-year period?
Yeah, in 2015 is when we had the grade issue, that's how we found out about it.
Got it, so far, based on letters and testimony and I, it seems like everyone would agree to four years, twenty plus. You don't know the years, I haven't been last year. What time do you come out and you say, hey, I'm a footballer?
Now, for my part, I can hear the shooting range in my house on the Wednesday nights, pop, pop, pop. Not very much, but I live closer, that could be a problem. But I know, oh, it's Wednesday night, if I heard that, I lived closer and it was, I tell you, I don't think I'd like that. So I'm still for putting a limo on how many nights a week.
You think four is enough, or four is too many?
Well, that's where I find the intensity a number one. That's where I feel that comes into place, the intensity the number one.
Randy, we also know that in about a month, we're going to hear a lot of pop, pop, pop every morning. Make a light because of the nature of the weather.
You have to get a heart.
Thirty minutes before, thirty minutes.
But that has limitations.
It does, the season ends.
Why don't we take a poll and, yeah, I'd either like maximum number of days anybody wishes to do something like that. I mean, that would set up some of the personal. It's that or it is getting late and I don't feel like we really, not all are agreed on all of this. I'm not sure where we should go or if we need to.
Yeah, first off, you don't have to be in agreement. You have to, if there's one item that you don't like and you can't support it, you just go, no.
And the other thing is, because we feel like, well, I don't like the dumb ones, we're finding facts, right? This is published in the paper, the letters said, we don't want to go through, I mean, we stayed here until about one other item. Sorry, your wife. Maybe this is.
On what?
A feeling of a number.
Okay.
We prefer the unobligatory, put out, instead of trying to do some old or anything like that.
Randy, do you put a motion in order to, if you have a feeling on proposal for a number of nights a week or hours or something? Do you have anything in mind?
Yes, I, I think four nights would be reasonable.
Is that, are you going to four days now?
Well, right now. Monday, Monday, Wednesday, or seven.
Right, that is.
What's that?
So are you proposing we add a number five, amendment to add number five and to find it support, no more than four days per week?
Yes.
So what four days, Monday through Friday or leave the weekends?
Monday through Friday, I definitely.
Monday through Friday, no more than four days?
Yes.
Just so Jack can bring it to write it up and make it back to us.
How do you enforce it?
Well, enforcing it's not the problem, it's actually getting a judge to convict on the evidence, so you have to have evidence.
So how do you know what nights and dates are given?
Yeah, ultimately. If you get someone who can testify with correct evidence to present to the judge, your photograph from this night, date and photograph, that'd be one way.
Yeah, we all have to take care of it.
But, right, but in that scenario, you have four, four consecutive nights, five nights or whatever. If you don't get those five nights in one week, then you can have somebody, ultimately, that's what it becomes.
It'd be pretty difficult to enforce.
Most likely. It's difficult, I think, if you're trying to.
Yeah, yes. That's why you rarely use citations, presumably, because the level of standard is really high, it's beyond a reasonable doubt. If it's A, just like any, if it was current case, even though it's just a city word.
So is a, a motion on the table to amend to add another, what was it, like a Jack?
Four nights per week, Monday through Friday. A condition that the athletic field be used no more than four nights per week between Monday through Friday.
We already have on there sunset, so. Do I have a second? On the second discussion, let me say second. Now we can discuss it.
Can I ask, I don't know if this is out of order, but can I ask a question, does it matter if it's night or day? Because that's, proposal is a night. Curling right now, but it's not on the situation.
Yeah, it says four nights.
Sorry.
Well, they, they, before you got the thing in, they had no such use of correct or sunset.
When's night start?
That can't, it matters, we have it tonight.
Do we have no more than four days a week, Monday through Friday?
Sure, in order to do that, we need to amend your motion, because you said nights, and that's why somebody came over to the second.
What do we, what do we do now?
Well, you can, you can hold your, yeah.
Okay, withdraw my motion.
Okay, now if you'd like to make a new motion.
I will make a new motion. That will be four days per week, Monday through Friday. So the other, what, here's the other thing about that, though, is, have we limited the timeframe? Could be all day long.
Number three, yes.
What's that?
Number three, sunset, sunset, after sunset.
But it could be all day.
Could be all day long, though. Sunrise and sunset.
But it's Sunday through Friday, there is a.
Somebody's got to get these kids there, so. But ultimately, yeah, it's.
The motion is now no more than four days a week, Monday through Friday. Second, second, discussion.
I still feel like that's a very dark trade, it's not on Monday to Friday, and that leaves over the weekend for future cases. There might be some examples, but four, that might be per. Again, four days out of five days a week would be hard to track. I just would not be in favor of stipulating, you know, a set number of days.
I usually, I always, I always be so many to have a straight.
I mean, that is true, I would want to be able to sit on my deck sometimes, where it's quiet.
I mean, it's, it's difficult because you can definitely see those sets. I mean, I'm all for the kids and having your own property, they have your kids play, you know? But this is a little bit beyond their kids, it's teams of regimented baseball teams. And there are other ballfields and things to do. So it's a little beyond just having the neighbor kids over for a friendly ballgame. On the other hand, it's the property they should be able to do, I know people do, they're out there, you know? But on the other hand, so did their neighbors, and now because of that, it's intruding on the neighbors. And so the neighbors now cannot enjoy the finding of peace and quiet that they want the worst and so on. So there is a definite concern on both ends. I mean, it's hard to talk to, to be at all. So, I mean, I understand if we're doing this, though, for a conditional use, then, you know, that's setting the parameters for other people who want to have the ballfield or something of that nature. And how do we, how do we do that?
Good point.
Let me ask you, I'll make a suggestion you guys consider. Subsection four B. The danger of extended landscaping and screening on site. Does that address? You could put a condition that additional landscaping be placed, or screening be placed between the properties to address the noise and/or the vision.
I think that would definitely.
That would be doubtful. True, but I mean, what, what are you going to indicate there? I mean, because it is going to take some trees, which trees buffer, you can see that, but these are thirty-year-old trees. You're not going to have those kind of buffers.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You're not going to have that now.
Well, it's purchased, it's actually eight-foot tall vines.
White vines.
Twelve-foot tall, twelve-foot tall, so, you know.
What kind of make a great buffer and privacy and?
Sure. I definitely think four B would be the better avenue to explore rather than pursuing a set number of days. Because we could, with four B, we're making something that's permanent, it's always going to be the case where you're with seven number of days.
But with existing conditions, if they go out and buy eight, you know, eight or twelve points, that are imposing a significant expense on the owners of the ballfields.
Are the ballfields a significant expense?
Yeah, it is. And the neighbors, they spend their, they look at it, and sometimes they're told, no, it's taken built.
You need to strike it about, I feel like that might go both ways, David's still going to appeal it, I'm just wondering, maybe with the privacy, potentially sound blocking that they're.
And if that is a change, you could, to put a few in.
So we need to, so we have a, a amendment for discussing changing what we do.
Yeah, there is a motion and a second on the floor.
For number five.
Yeah, number five, eliminate two or days, number five.
Let's do a call on votes on number five.
Okay. Rand?
Aye.
Steve?
No.
Carmen?
No.
Connor?
No.
Mayor Volle?
No.
Deb?
I don't know what that.
I know.
I get what Connor's saying, I'm voting for a man who's perhaps just treating the owner, so as far as limitations, I don't have to worry.
Shirley?
Yes.
So two, two, one to five, yep.
Did you hear, did you say?
We're back to the, whatever's on the document, plus the agenda right now, so if there's anything else, we're going to, yeah, I'm going to go down and look it out back to you.
I'm moving to be amend only inclusion of, or the recommendation by the, yes, by number four B to completely obscure the.
Totally, totally obscure?
Totally obscure the ballfield from the proximity of the neighbors.
Which neighbors?
Western boundary, the, the western boundary.
But you can't say that for every condition, though.
No, 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 but that's for this.
For this one, all right.
This, this one stands on its own feature, one of the, we don't discuss that area. But based on, unless you said totally obscure, because right now it's nearly totally obscure, right? On the east, west, and south, so if you're going to work on the western boundary, you can say you're very obscure, or you can say it's here. I imagine it's a secure, or obscure for all of them.
So that's adding trees on the western, so, and I'm trying to determine the scope here, so once again, it comes to enforcement. You can see in some of the applications submitted and some of the stuff, there are some trees already placed on Felix's property, transplants or trees that Mr. Felix purchased in the property. So is it? Are you talking obscuring, it's almost that area where there are trees, for example, you see the bottom picture of the application, part of it's obscured, honestly, if you go out there, you can certainly see this place, and if you look at his pictures, you can see, yeah, you can see the view.
I feel like what would make the most sense is obscure the outer proximity of the ballfield to where, if like, all baseball fields typically will have a fence of some sort at the back. And if this were a case, that would obscure from all lines of sight for neighbors. Sorry, I'm not recognizing the fence.
Well, ultimately, it's, it's obscured, so you're not recognizing the fence, you're not recognizing, quite as you're recognizing that they obscure. So it could be a fence or.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to amend four B to completely obscure neighbors on all boundaries from the ballfield.
And let me clarify, I'm assuming four B is the finding. But in order to do that, we don't need to amend B, we need to add a condition.
Yes.
Under, under A, yeah, so number five of the conditions would be to allow the major extended landscaping and screening on site to change the western boundary and asset transit vegetation, which is essentially, but that's a permit. So you want it to match the nearly totally obscured field area. So putting up a fence along that property line would meet that. I'm trying to figure out what it is, if there's a fence in place, does that meet the nearly totally obscured?
Or do you want it to stay in the condition, trees or vegetation? Trees and vegetation, you have more fence.
Yes.
Just somebody. You want to, you want to, you want to throw anything out there, I would just say to, to allow.
It's a leading word.
So do I have to just take?
So what is the motion? Yeah, and I'm trying to get some language to, to craft that so that I can, therefore, sit back here. So you're saying trees, vegetation, fences, yeah.
Do you have a de-ification, landscaping, some sort of sharing on site?
The applicant shall, and here's the, based upon what's been said, I'm going to throw it out and you guys can tweak it to. The applicant install condition on the applicant install trees, vegetation fixes, or other obscuring materials on the western boundary.
Is this the same western boundary or? So as if they, could you say this is just for this one or?
Based on the finding facts, it says that the, yeah, it's just for this one, this condition is fine. Somebody else comes in tomorrow, wants baseball field, and they have it here on the north and south side, this would apply to. But it would, it could look at and say, we didn't do all four sides. But again, somebody else has another baseball field, what do you practice? This is the first one we've had, jazz ballplayers, mostly just punch bop and baseball.
And the lax condition use permit that came through was when we had electronic signs, and you had to give a condition. But, but those, we, you know, but those have been hammered out so many times that were very specific, because we had electronic sign condition use permit. It was going to be additional, so you can call.
So do we need to stay playing again, or does it still wait for a second?
Yeah, I'll, well, let me state it, make sure you guys are fine with it, and you can, yeah, so the applicant install trees, vegetation fixes, or other obscuring materials on the western. Is it eastern, west, western, western? That encompasses everything that you and I, I have to force that.
There is a neighbor straight to the north also. Straight to the north.
And what about when you have new people that are coming, that are going to be?
And tho, and those areas are nearly totally obscured all day.
Based on the finding facts.
Well, the picture pretty much showed that, yeah. The neighbor to the north supports it. That was the main, that's next to the north.
Okay, so do we, do we have a motion now?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Okay, sorry, discussion?
We do have a second?
No.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Commentary motion, the applicant install trees, vegetation, fixes, or other obscuring materials on the western boundary.
Do we have a second? Second.
For purposes of this discussion.
Discussion on this.
Do you guys feel like that needs to be dealt with, or we're trying to solve both issues that you don't?
So at this point, I can ask the secretary, how much would a twelve-foot white line, whatever was you meant to cost?
A eight-foot white line, I know it's about costing me a hundred fifty dollars, I bought four of them.
Twelve, twelve feet?
For an eight footer, I think a ten footer was a little bit more, twelve footer.
Yeah, that's, that's reasonable.
Yeah, I bought, I bought it in Site One, on four thirty-five, for about our bar, just our building screening from the houses.
Much less than that.
But you want that for business Site One, because not for.
And there's.
We knew, you know, we're maybe it's the first.
Well, yeah, I mean, still, it's like three thousand dollars, three years, that's kind of huge.
If, right, if it's just trees.
Yeah.
I can, I can tell you that Ashma has set investigation backwards, whatever it is, that's another restoration. It's blanked out, I think.
It was blocked more so.
And we have to, it's a large event, but they put them in, it has to be taken care of.
Yes.
Yeah, it becomes a permit.
We have a vote.
We're still in discussion.
Yeah.
Can we move to part of the discussion, you want? You want to start it?
As, as Carmen said earlier, I call a question, and that means you have a vote.
Okay, Deb. Deb.
You can. Aye.
Mayor Volle?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Carmen?
No.
Steve?
Hi.
Rand?
Aye.
Shirley?
No.
So five to two.
So we're back in discussion, right? Back to discussion?
With, is, and, okay, now there are five conditions.
So if you asked me, since you said no, there must be more, we would have to do that, right?
I just, I'm not sure that that's going to be enough, and I'm not sure that it's in our ground to make. I don't know, I, I'll make some questions on someone, sure. But it's, it's a bad expense, but yet it'd be more handling expense, too, so it is a.
Like an effort of making.
Yes.
Exactly.
But it depends upon the field, so. I think what it comes down to is, I'm not going to make.
That needs to be covered.
And again, you can make additional amendments to the conditions, based on the finding facts, based on this one.
I mean, I mean, we just put the situation, you said trees, the automatic issue, because that is.
Trees, vegetation, fixes, or other obscuring materials on the western boundary.
That is, that would be, I mean, I have different lots, lots of different things.
Absolutely, they have options.
If you guys, if you guys like our discussion, we have, if you want to go on the fence, all right, fifty percent is here, it's either two foot or four inch, or two inch or four inch, or one inch, you want it? I don't know what a fifty percent is.
But if it's, it's, it's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, that's a very, that's a good. So now, now we start back in discussion of the recommendations as amended, which has two minutes now. Just keep going.
I asked if we could go for this, if we could go for this, and, yes.
Yeah, I don't know if it's passed.
I don't think it's passed.
So really, the last, I mean, we can go through and verify the fact on our own, that's.
Yeah, for sure, we can.
But normally, you can do procedures and vote all seven at once.
Right.
Um, ends up you, or, if somebody wants to ask more, we can do it all by one. I would ask to go one by one that way, if there is uncertainty, we can find, we can discuss.
Right, okay. So do we have a motion to?
We're creating a vote.
Oh, right, okay. So we go see to go to number one.
Well, if you want to make a motion to vote on the finding of facts, or if you leave, so they instead of.
Well, yeah, ultimately, it would be, I, I, you, he would make a motion to, relate it to the start with number one. A motion to approve the stated finding, the statutes regarding, regarding the boundary.
Yeah.
And then he would need a second, and then there could be discussion, if it, if it comes up, it's fine, or somebody can say, I, I will to amend that. Can I make that discussion, I vote?
I'm moved to vote on finding of facts, more than given the current minutes to the recommendations. Second. Deb, that, pretty much your.
I put the mayor down, so that's what I'm going with.
You lost.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to vote?
We can debate first.
Okay, on number one.
Yes.
First discussion on number one.
And for the audio part, I, I speak very loudly in the microphone, it showed up well on the tape, so I'll. The, the finding that is in the proposal is the location of the use means the intensity yard and use regulations as it relates to item number one.
Correct.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, if we do this one by one, isn't that the same thing as pressing the whole thing?
No, because, because ultimately, um, ultimately, the way we, we have, we're doing it is you go through each, it can go through five, two, five, one, six, uh, six, one, um, four, three, and, and when you get to the end, all you have to make it, when you do the end vote, if you don't believe item one has been met, you vote no. But you may think item one's not met, you vote no, he may think item three's not met, he votes no. But everybody, assuming everybody went through it, and it was one vote no, and all theoretically, it could be all seven against it, because you have to have all seven of the factors.
And then Jack gets to type all this up and put it in our back for next Tuesday, well. So I was looking forward to it.
And Steve, did you explain?
Pass or fail, it still goes with all. Stay tuned next Tuesday night at seven, that's fair. All right, so we have a motion and a second on number one, and I don't need to debate. Does anyone else?
Discussion.
Call for the answer.
Rand.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Carmen.
Yes.
Connor.
Aye.
Mayor Bowley.
Yes.
Deb.
Aye.
Shirley. Seven to zero.
Start listening, come.
Nice.
I move that we vote on finding of fact to, uh, given the current commitments to the recommendations of the twenty question. That vote for a second.
Steve. I seen, I'm sorry, I seen Steve.
Steve, Steve.
Okay, discussion. Proposed use for lessening impact on the tax base to provide additional baseball fields for practices. I mean, I guess that's a true statement, that.
If anyone in the audience would like to get some of that, please get some of this to the one night before you. Go for it.
Deb.
Deb.
Aye.
Mayor Bowley.
Yes.
Connor.
Aye.
Carmen.
Yes.
Steve.
Aye.
Rand.
Aye.
Shirley.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Okay, Steve.
Get me the motion.
I agree.
I move that we accept the fact of finding of the trees, proposed conditional use, for lack of substantial interest to the value of the park or the neighborhood, in the Tennessee area.
Second.
Discussion. We discussed this earlier. Any other discussion?
Call.
Rand.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Carmen.
No.
Connor.
Aye.
Mayor Bowley.
Yes.
Deb.
Aye.
Shirley.
No.
Five to two.
I move that we accept finding of fact on the board.
Yeah, is that, Connor? Just to clarify, I, four, that means both A and B.
I'm not going to separate it.
Yes.
And are there structures, lighting, sound?
I believe we covered these.
We covered this. Call.
Deb.
Aye.
Mayor Bowley.
Yes.
Connor.
Aye.
Rand.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Carmen.
Yes.
Shirley.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
I move to approve finding of fact on the cloud option park or the area, provided the board's with this standard, so forth, and these regulations, and such areas will be screened, for joining residential use in the local area, so ask to check that for the eventual use, and introduce the fact.
Second.
Discussion.
Call.
Rand.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Carmen.
Yes.
Connor.
Aye.
Mayor Bowley.
Yes.
Deb.
Aye.
Shirley.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
We will now accept finding of fact, being number six, adequate utility, drainage, otherness, such necessary facilities have been or will be provided.
No utility.
I put the mayor down.
And, and will they, will they indicate the, the sort of trees, will that make any drainage or drainage?
Any other discussion?
Call.
Deb.
Aye.
Mayor Bowley.
Yes.
Connor.
Aye.
Rand.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Carmen.
Yes.
Shirley.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
I move that we approve finding of fact number seven. Second.
Discussion. Current drive interest, current standards. Indicated that they just work a little property, and tree work. Discussion.
Call.
Rand.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Carmen.
Yes.
Connor.
Aye.
Mayor Bowley.
Yes.
Deb.
Aye.
Shirley.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
I move that we elect this election, and approve the recommendation, laying commission as amended. I'll for vote, well, sorry, 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 I can call for a vote on.
Presentation, on my next, on my hearing.
Sorry, sorry, I can call for a vote on recommendation of the laying commission as amended, which would include our two amendments, so we, right, yeah.
We might, three, and we're going to go for the two amendments, with number one, we've been to add the sound system.
Correct.
And number five is added to.
Trees, vegetation mixes, or other obscure materials on the western boundary.
One thing we did not put on the five, is how long, and whether they need to do that. They could do that in five years, they could do that in one year, they could do that.
They need to do it for the use, that's generally it, so.
In order for this to be decided.
Okay.
This is the conditional use permit, they can't use it until the name is.
So is that, is that the only thing, you can, the ball, practice?
They got to start with, yeah, kind of fence, or something to obscure, yeah.
I have information, was that to go overall? Yes, but, but that's the only, still, I would wish that we have, like, do, do we have a second, and?
And then we're two amendments.
Right, so we're still discussing, so we're back in discussion of the original, as amended, so I'm asking for a vote on conditions of, of the document, as, but are there any other discussions, not to negate that, are there any other discussions that, prior to the vote?
I guess, and for clarification, you know, this. To vote on this, yes, now, is saying, we agree with the five facts and findings and recommendations we have added back to make a conditional use permit available to recommend to the board, that maybe should want.
Yes. And that's, that also means that you agree with all seven finding of facts, and which two of you do not, so might be called your vote, probably, you know, right, yes. Because of number three, which is why I asked if you guys, and you don't, you don't have to vote.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Yep, a motion, and it was seconded at the very beginning.
About pay costs.
Yeah. And then we went through the discussion process, and then did that, and reached a motion.
Is it sunset? It's almost going to rise.
Is there a, a discussion? I know this call.
Okay, Rand.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Carmen. Connor.
Aye.
Mayor Bowley.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Shirley. Five to two.
This will be on the board's agenda next Tuesday night, the first reading for a conditional use permit, using the finding of fact, it's totally, that are just approved. Steve, you're the guy. Second reading, we're going to do that.
So you don't.
At that meeting, it's public comment only, there's no public hearing, and you come to that meeting, and you spill out a card, and you provide to the board with three minutes of public comment.
Fifth degree.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, uh, thank you all for coming and sitting through the process with us. That's a little bit worse tonight, but thank you for being here, we appreciate your input and way. Um, so with that, are you, would you like to see the motion, please?
I'll make a motion, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing any opposed, no. Hearing none.